All right, I'll call a meeting to order at 6:30. Um, need for an executive session. I have two personnel.
I got one personnel.
You've got one personnel.
Two contract.
Two contract? Can I get a second?
Second here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, need to amend the agenda.
If Chad does not come on the extended warranty thing, he hasn't given me information yet, so that might be coming off. I just don't know yet.
Okay.
So you can just table it when you get there.
Yeah.
Table, we can table it when it comes to that. Uh, I need to add the Fire Hill Road Dogs. The new business.
Old or new?
I would say it's old business, isn't it?
Want it under old?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, anything else? Can I get a motion to? Got a motion seconded by Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
Select Board minutes of January 4th. Anybody have anything on those?
They're not the ones on the table, they're the ones that were in your packet.
No, those are the ones you were in the packet.
Yep.
All set.
Everybody all set with them?
Yep.
All those are going around to save us time. Uh, minutes of January 5th. Does anybody have anything on those?
All good.
Yep, good. Okay, and January 9th.
All good.
All good. Orders. Anybody have anything on the orders?
Well, I had it. There's the item number 825, highway truck. Batteries, uh, brakes. It was three thousand, little over three thousand bucks. Must be they did a complete great job or, I mean, it's quite a bit of money for inspection.
Earls, yep.
Uh, just wanted to. Had to been quite a bit of work besides inspection, brakes and exhaust. Maybe they had to replace everything.
They had to replace a U-joint strap kit, the Vermont State inspection, a headlight module, long stroke brake chamber with welded clevis, exhaust pipe, step clamps, two brake drums, two sets of shoes, a studded battery cable lug, battery heat shrink, input sleeve, seal and sleeve kit, gear oil. It says they checked over for Vermont State inspection, left turn signal and parking light out on plowlights. Plowlight module failed, replaced, working like they should now. Flex pipe between after treatment and stack broken, replaced with new clamps. Replaced driver, rear drive axle brake chamber, drive axle clevises froze up. Freed all up and adjusted brakes, passenger steer axle brake shoes were rusted. Pulled front wheels and drums, removed and replaced shoes and hardware.
That adds up to.
I think it covers it.
It goes on and on, but basically just check the front end of the vehicle.
No problem. And there was another one, the Fire F-550 antifreeze and filter for eleven hundred. That seems, that may be the same thing again. There's a lot more in there than what they've.
I'm sure there's more to it than that.
That's item, uh, 490.
CB truck.
Uh, Central Vermont Truck Repair.
Yep, yep. Probably the same thing again, a whole bunch of stuff. Two perhaps.
There's one for eleven hundred and eight, eighty-one.
Yeah.
Uh, replaced, uh, front sway bar links, repaired battery connector on front winch, Vermont State inspection. So it was labor of four hundred ninety-three fifty and parts of five hundred ninety-five fifty-seven, plus shop supplies, et cetera.
Yep.
And then, um, the other one was a heating issue and at a Vermont State inspection.
That answers that pretty well.
And they did an oil change.
Only question I had was the number one from A&amp;J Auto, first item, 489 for support bags. I don't remember ever seeing that one before.
You said it's A&amp;J Auto?
Yeah, it's first item on the 0015.
Support bags.
It says ordered one seventy-five hundred XL airlift. Uh, their suspension support bags for the water truck.
Must be an air ride and they had to change, uh.
Must be.
I don't know, it's just.
The water truck.
It's gotta be sewer, water and sewer truck.
Water and sewer truck.
They got, they got 550 too, I think.
Yes, they do.
Would that have air ride, would that have air?
Says, says, water truck support bags.
It's, I'm here, cause Pat sent an email to Sean asking what it was, and he says, Pat, their suspension support bags for the water truck.
Well, maybe.
I mean, he's got airbags.
It could because they carry, uh, sand in the back of that too. So that's probably right. It probably does have those airbags. But that's all, that was, I'm just, I've never seen it before, so. Yeah, they could've.
I think the newer ones have them, cause Rick's 550s do.
That's probably what it is. It's just, usually I, if it's something I've always seen, I know it's okay.
Well, you don't think much about it, right, but yeah.
Something new that I've never seen, I ain't even.
Something that size, you don't think of an air suspension on it, but they very well could be.
It'd have those big bags in the back.
Anything else?
Okay, so there's two on this one, and there's two on this one, and there's payroll.
Two on this one.
The prices are going up. I bought a set of tires today for the steering axle on my tractor. It was eleven hundred and some odd dollars for two tires. And they, they're not Michelin's either.
Yeah.
Two, Joe.
Well, pickup tires are pushing two, three hundred bucks, three hundred. So, yeah.
Yeah, I gotta replace mud on my truck. It's not to warm this year. The 2015s are getting old and, you know.
Oh, yeah, no, mine on my truck are getting worn, but I'm running them for all they're worth.
Although they don't sit in the sun, so they're probably okay.
Right, yeah, my, well, mine's.
Wear, so it's.
Um, I guess if you want to start with your report while we're doing this.
Yep. Uh, the new highway truck came in, it was delivered January 6th. It is white. People were asking what color it is. It is white, if you see it. Um. We had a. Yep. Um, a citizen called about the debris on Route 7, south of the mobile station. You see this white stuff. We thought it was construction debris. He actually has gone out four times and cleared his driveway off. It's the white lines on Route 7 peeling up.
Oh, that's what that stuff is?
That is what it is. So I have alerted V-Trans to this, and they said, well, we'll paint them again in the spring. And I'm like, and so I emailed back and said, that's great, but what about the mess? And I haven't heard back. But just in case anybody wants to know what it is.
That's what it is.
It's the white lines peeling up.
Cause I've seen it, yeah.
It looks awful, but that's what it is.
Just have Chad keep track of his hours, we'll send him a bill.
So if anybody asks what it is.
It has its material going, ain't it?
Well, it's paint, yeah.
Uh, Pittsburgh Village Farm Grant, we're good to go with that. I've been put into gears and all of that, so we're able to keep them going with that. I, Sean and I met with Otter Creek Engineering on the 12th. I outlined it all in your packets, I'm not reading it all now. And I have sent Gary Compher a list for the property taxes for sale, um, that we went over in the previous meeting. I also attended at the Rowland Regional Planning Commission, the FEMA virtual tabletop exercise. If anybody wants to report that they did after that, I can send it to you guys. Uh, they just gave it to me today. Um, Rowland Mental Health wanted us aware that they now have a mental health crisis text line, so people can text instead of call if they feel more comfortable. They're hoping this will get the younger generations that are having mental instability to text. Um, so we have that number if anybody's interested in that. The Cedar is doing a legislative breakfast, January 30th from seven, at 7:30 AM. If anybody's interested, I can give you the registration information. Um, AMIA approved of the rate change that you guys sent a letter for. We got, um, a notice. I got an email back saying that they've changed it. They're, we're all set with that. And then, RCAP has an online workshop I'd like to take. It's free. It's for management and finances for small water and sewer systems for the state of Vermont. Um, and it goes over management, budgets, importance of reserves, rate setting, asset management, that kind of thing for it. And so I just wanted your permission to take the class. It's not gonna cost anything, except for my time.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I'll be here a little bit later on a Wednesday afternoon to take it, cause it goes until 6:00, but I wanted to make sure it was okay before I just signed up.
Yep.
And I think that's the down and dirty.
That's the down and dirty.
Great.
Uh, so that Rowland Mental Health number, is that something that could be on our website, just so people can access it?
If you want it to be on, I can put it under the resources tab.
I think that, yeah.
Great idea.
That would be good.
Yep.
Uh, Select Board member remarks. Anybody have anything?
I'm all set. Nope.
Uh, I was at regional planning last night. They had on the agenda this solar field over here in the, but it wasn't that. They put the wrong one in the packet, so, uh, and then I've talked to Ann, that'll be in here. It was a grant opportunity to weatherize some of our buildings and stuff, so that's later on. That was about all I got out of that, so. Uh, public comments.
Uh, my name is Dan Kipout, um, live in East Pittsburgh, been a resident there over forty years. Um, inquiring again about enforcement of the junk ordinance. Uh, was here about a month, month and a half ago. Was wondering if there was any progress with it, cause the situation's getting worse.
Was it understanding that some of that was cleaned up?
Yeah, our health officer was here, what, two weeks? Was it last meeting ago? Yeah, two, yeah, two weeks ago.
I have about three of these to pass.
Those Jill and I can share on.
And.
I'll go over these pictures with you.
He says that.
First picture here, uh, and you can see these are all the way from the road.
Yep.
This guy's starting a, to be a scrapper. What you see upside down right in the road there, or next to the road is upside down refrigerator. Uh, these, all these pictures were taken within the last ten days.
Okay.
On the back is, uh, so that's one residence. The next residence here, um, he tends to think he can burn in his front yard. That's a burn pit.
Oh, nice.
So basically, he's just taking and burning, and again, that's the picture of the road right in front of, uh, uh, again, same pick, same place, same deal, a little better picture of the burn pit, um, you know, I find this unsightly. This is definitely not something that we should be able to see easily. Um, I mean, if the guy wants to put this junk around, put a fence up. I don't think he should be able to burn in his front yard like that. Uh, the next picture, um, I believe, which one do you guys have?
That's.
Uh, this is a different residence. What this person does is, she's a, what do you call it, a hoarder? And in these bags are Mountain Dew bottles. So evidently she likes to save these for recycling, but hasn't turned them in yet. Uh, again, we're right by the road, put a fence up. Either cash or men, put a fence up. At the same residence, by her back door, this is what we see. Uh, just open up the door and throw the stuff out. Again, these pictures are all in the last ten days. You know, I'm not getting it. I'm not, you know, it's just really disheartening to see this stuff in my neighborhood. Um, on the back of each one is, uh, the name and address of these people, okay? Uh, the one residence, uh, the Mountain Dew lady, she is a tenant, okay? Um, so we can get ahold of the tenant, get ahold of the landlord. Also the Mountain Dew lady, if you look in the picture, you're gonna see a door coming off of her living room that has an eight-foot drop to it. I mean, I, that's, that's not the issue here, but it's just something you might pick up in the picture.
Well, but you look at below that window, it's all, and we, all that was brought up to our health officer. He did, I believe he did say that the bag, these bags out front, he knew were full of bottles, that it wasn't trash, so. He did not, well, no, I'm, I'm just saying, he did, yep. But he was gonna look into this, because, I mean, that window's about to fall out.
I thought he reported that some of that stuff had been picked up.
Well, yeah, he said some of it had been picked up.
Doesn't look like that in his pictures, no.
It's gotten worse. Like I said, yeah, she did pick up the stuff and she put it in black bags. It looks like trash. You know, if you don't know it's Mountain Dew bottles, it looks like trash.
No, no, clearly it looks like trash.
Put up a fence, okay? I mean, here's your ordinances right here, the next page, it gives you the definition of junk. It goes right through and says the requirements, what's unlawful, and then it said the selectmen are to write, Select Board is to write a letter to them with their first offense. So, and I, maybe I'm beating a dead horse, I don't know. Uh, but like I said, my granddaughter drives, rides through the neighborhood saying junkie, junkie, junkie. Uh, my nephew says you live in a very different neighborhood, Uncle Dan, so, um, you know, I've been there forty years, and this, I, 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 I can't believe this is allowed to transpire.
Well, the burning, I mean, is it burning garbage?
I have no idea.
Okay.
I mean, this, plus, look at his front yard.
I think some of those appliances being tipped up and over could be an issue.
Clearly that's a, not true.
Yeah.
Well, it's junk, yes, yeah, yeah. Yep.
I think we're gonna have to redeploy our health officer, and if it doesn't handle it, then I would say we need to write a letter. Been here twice.
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, from here, I can go to the Rowland Solid Waste District, talk to them, and after that, I guess I go to the state. I, I, I don't know. I, I, like I say, I've talked to the health officer, uh, I've talked to the zoning commissioner, uh, I talked to the, uh, the town manager, and I've talked to you twice now. And it, it's getting worse. I, 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 I don't mean to be upset, but.
Well, no, it's, it's, I mean, the, you know, the kids' toys, I don't know if there's a lot we can do about the kids' toys, but certainly the burning, I mean, you aren't supposed to burn garbage, which is probably what it is. I mean, I don't know.
You can only burn it in a three-foot pit, and other than that, you have to have a permit to do any burning anyways.
I don't think you can burn trash at all.
No, you can't burn.
You can't burn trash at all, no, no. And I mean, this.
It's all visible from the street. It's, this isn't being done in backyards or anything like this. All these pictures are taken from my vehicle. So I'm not snooping, I'm just driving by.
Well, yeah, no.
Anybody can drive by and see, see these situations.
This appears to be garbage in this picture. I, I don't see that that's.
The one behind the house. Oh, yeah, no, that's clearly, I would say, garbage.
This is pretty much up in the same neighborhood up in that.
Right, pretty much the same family.
All right.
Most people are very clean in that neighborhood, and yet we have this, so.
I.
I, I don't know why it has to be this way. Like I said, you're gonna say, if you want to do this, put up a fence.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They're violation of, they've got old tires and all kinds of crap in there.
All kinds of crap. And, and the ordinances are very well written.
It's clear.
Uh, they were accepted 2007, so one thing was said to me here, uh, at one time, not in front of you people, but it was said that these ordinances are very hard to enforce. Um, I don't see why, it's pretty well written. The steps that need to be taken.
Well, I think we should have our health officer making another visit there, and if he can't come to, uh, some kind of answer.
I think we should have our town attorney write a letter to him.
Then we need to.
Maybe we start with the letter first, and then have our town attorney get involved.
Yeah.
I think we have to have our health officer back. I, I was under the understanding this had been picked up, that's what.
No, that's, the night he was here, because we had, we had him in here for this discussion.
Yeah.
And he said he'd been up there, and there was a pickup that was full of garbage. He said the garbage, I don't remember if the pickup was.
Pickup's gone.
The pickup's gone, yep, okay. So, you know, he thought it was getting better, but I think his problem is, nobody will answer the door.
Doesn't matter, write a letter.
Oh, no, 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 I'm just saying, that's, you know, what he's run into. That they see somebody and they just don't come to the door.
We can do both right off.
Do both?
Yep.
Yep.
Can, we speed things up about this refrigerator? I mean, this really bothers me that there's a refrigerator laying by the side of the road. I mean, the kids in the neighborhood could be playing with it, fall underneath of it, whatever. I mean, I, I find that to be a very serious problem.
Or it could be leaking.
Yeah.
If I lay it on its side, that, that could be an issue.
It's five, five feet off the road.
Yeah, no, we'll, uh, we'll have to get ahold of our health officer tomorrow and get him up there, at least handle that. We can handle the other part of the letter.
Well, yeah, we'll get him, we'll get him on it again, and we'll get a letter written.
Okay.
Step one.
Sorry you had to come back.
Yeah, yeah, it's, again, we thought that it, I mean, it's, it's never gonna be perfect, probably, but we thought it at least gotten better.
No, it's gotten worse.
Okay, no, no. It certainly doesn't look any better.
If somebody comes to you about your trash, and you say, okay, and they walk away, and then you start burning it in your front yard.
Well, yeah.
Come on, you know?
There's numerous things.
Yeah.
I, I don't find that acceptable.
The flip side of that is, the problem, people like that, then they go over on Syndicate Road and throw it out in my field, so, you know, it's.
Yeah, I will.
You know?
Thank you.
So, yeah, sorry you had to come, but we'll, again, we'll get a letter out, and we'll get our health guy, especially on this. I mean, that's almost, that's gotta be in the road right away.
Well, they can start finding them here, so.
I don't know what this guy's doing as a scrapper, but to pile it by the road like that is just.
They need to fence it just like the.
Just like a salvage yard.
Exactly.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, so thank you for your time.
Yep, no, thank you for letting us know. Like I said, that's, we, you know, we're under the impression that it was better, so.
Your complaint is legit, there's no question.
Sad part, this is not the only place that you can do this.
It's just concentrated in my neighborhood.
Yep.
That's what bothers me. And these people continue to get away with it. Um, the, the zoning commissioner said to me, we've talked to these people, and they say, we've been living this way for years, that's the way it is. I don't find that to be an answer from the zoning commissioner.
No, you got enough things there where.
Yep. Well, yeah, cause it's, you got health and safety, you know, it's, like I say, the kids' toys in the yard, there really isn't much we can do about that.
Well, that, that you don't.
But, you know.
Garbage.
Garbage and, and scrap, almost in the right away, that's different. Yeah.
Bunch of nonsense.
It's a bunch of nonsense.
That's what they're doing, right, the junkyard right there. What are the tires piled up? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. I can see ten, eleven of them right there.
Ann's gonna get ahold of Rich.
Okay.
So.
Do you need me to draft a letter for you guys to look at tomorrow night?
Please.
Yep.
Thank you.
We'll be together.
Oh, yeah, we get together tomorrow night for some stuff, so we can, Ann will get us a letter, and we will get it out.
Awesome, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
And, you know, don't be shy, come, if it doesn't, come back, let us know, because we are, it's, it's, none of us drive that way, so.
And, you know, I'm ratting out my neighbors, it's hard.
Or call, or call Ann.
You can feel free to call.
Call Ann, okay. I've been here before for it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm Extension 13, if you want to get ahold of me for anything.
Okay.
I'm just the assistant to the town manager, but I can, I'll definitely keep everybody in a loop.
Sure, thank you.
And if you want, my office door's open, you can grab one of my business cards, and that way you can email me information if you want to.
Should first name and some pictures.
Yep.
I'll put pictures of it cleaned up.
That'd be great.
Well, that would be nice, you know, I mean, people mostly come here to complain. It would be nice, somebody came and said, hey, you know, it got fixed.
Anybody have a deal on fences?
Okay. Any, yep, any other public comment? I don't know who's.
They're on for the Bass snowmobile police patrol request.
Oh, okay, all right, so I'll get to them, uh, I'll get to them next, yep. Uh, so we'll skip over old business, we'll go to new business. Bass snowmobile police patrol request.
Thanks for seeing us tonight. Um, my name's Kim Woodard, I'm the Rowland County liaison for Bass between law enforcement and, you know, any landowners or disputes or, um, anything of that nature. And it was brought to my attention that the Pittsburgh Club had, um, said that they talked to the, I believe it was another officer, and said that they might be willing to help us with maybe some road crossing coverage and things like that, because right now, we're really short-staffed, and, you know, we just want to keep things really safe out there. And we've got some money in our budget, and we also, I believe there might be some Bass money. I'll let Mike speak on that, just cause I wasn't at the last meeting, but what we're really looking to do is to try to get some additional coverage in some of the higher, um, traffic areas.
Mike can speak on one. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, we got you now, Mike.
Okay, so gentlemen, um, thanks for having us tonight. Ladies and ladies and gentlemen, and guys, I think you're doing a fabulous job. Um, I was on my select board for fourteen years, and, uh, it's not an easy task, so. So, so what we're doing is Rowland County Bass is having a very, very hard time securing law enforcement to enforce, um, TMAs, insurance, loud pipes, speeding, this and that. Um, the state police has nobody that can help us anymore, they're short-staffed. The sheriffs have nobody. The only people we have right now are fish and game.
And that's, we have two of those people.
Right, but that's for the whole county too.
Right. And those few people are actually being diverted to cover some vacant spots, as well as there was a gentleman who retired, so they're having to cover for them as well.
So I have spoken with, with chief, and I have sent him over, the protocol here for you guys to help us out with enforcement is you have to, you have to actually put an application in to Bass to apply to enforce. And then there's a little bit of training that has to be done with Fish and Wildlife, which Bass organizes with your police department. Um, right off the bat, do you guys have any questions for us?
What do they use for equipment?
Excuse me?
What do, what do our police officers use for equipment to patrol the Bass trails? We don't have any sleds.
Right, what we're looking for is just some road coverage on the crossings, there's some road coverage on 7. Um, you know, and actually, there's probably a couple of other spots that they could patrol. As people come through, they've gotta stop. So if there's an officer there, they can check TMAs, they can, you know, just make sure that there aren't any loud pipes going through. People aren't diverting onto landowners' properties and things like that.
So are you looking for some contract hours from our police force to do this? Or are?
Yes. Right, we are, aren't we, Mike?
Um, yes, we, we have monies to pay your officers to do that.
Uh, the, okay, going back, the training for the officers, you would pay for that, or is that something that's free, what's?
I believe that that is, um, I, I believe that's pro bono. I think that's free.
Okay, okay.
Should bring that up with our chief, shouldn't we?
Well, he said they had, so.
Chief has talked to them and he needed select board approval before he could fill out the paperwork to do the application to be able to do the roadside patrol.
But he seemed in favor of it.
He seemed in favor of it.
I don't see an issue with it if we're gonna be, you know.
So how much time are you looking for? What are your thoughts on that for Pittsburgh at least?
Go ahead, Kim.
Well, right now I'd just like to maximize the budget and, you know, obviously pay them what, you know, they expect as well and, and also be able to balance kinda with their regular job and then add to this. So I don't have a specific number of hours that we would like, but we certainly would just like some coverage on some high traffic days and things like that. And also to utilize the budget resources that we have.
So probably you're looking for some coverage after a heavy snow when everybody starts getting out there and that's your thoughts?
And the weekends are busy and sometimes a Wednesday night is busy. But, you know, we've got a decent amount of money. I know that VAS gives Rutland County some money and then we also have money in our budget to also help fund that. So, you know, we would just try to utilize those resources in order to pay the officers.
Would you be able to submit what crossings you'd like them to concentrate on or do you just want us to?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we could do that to help out with some coverage in some high traffic areas, that's not a problem. I'd probably have to go back and meet with a couple of people too, just from Pittsburgh to find out, you know, where they're seeing some of the high traffic areas too. But I know like Seven has a couple of crossings and those are busy.
Stevens Road, Cornhill Road crossing too.
I don't see an issue with this. The chief's okay with it, I'm, I'm good.
Can you guys make a motion?
That we authorize Chief Warfel to enter an agreement with these folks.
Second on that.
Any discussion from anybody? All in favor?
Let us know if you're not happy with the results from this because we'll visit it again if we need to.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think any coverage that we can get out there right now is very valuable because everybody's so limited and we just wanna keep everybody safe, you know, and there's always gonna be a few people that are, you know, not following the rules. So if we can help, just even visibility wise helps us, you know.
And you talked about the loud pipes, you start making people angry with the loud pipes and then your trails get closed down. I mean, there's a lot of reasons to. Of course, gotta get snow first. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks so much.
So here's what we'll do, we'll, we'll reach out to Chief Warfel and I'll help come up with Kim and her email and we'll work our way through this.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, am I supposed to stay on new business, transfer station ordinance?
Everything in red is new, everything black was your original ordinance. It's basically, the biggest change is Article Four. You had dollar figures in there, I wanted to eliminate dollar figures because they are, the ones that are in here are old dollar figures and not the way the transfer station actually operates now. So I changed my proposed replacement Article Four, I would say, admission to the transfer station facility shall only be authorized residents with a valid numbered permit issued by the town of Pittsburgh. Numbered transfer station permits are available at the town clerk's office at a cost to be determined annually. The fee will be posted on the town's website, www.pittsburghvermont.com and available at the town offices. The permit will entitle the residential unit to enter the transfer station facility. Upon purchase of the permit, the resident will also receive one punch card. Residential units will need to purchase additional punch cards as needed for their waste. Each card will have ten punches and there will be a set annual rate for punch passes. Each punch is equivalent to one bag of trash. Punch cards are available at the town clerk's office.
Does, okay, the only other thing, 'cause this has been an issue before, because you get people that use the big contractor bags, so should there be something in there about the size of the bag?
We can put, so Helen told me after I had done this, and she just told me the other day, she said that they're usually no bigger than, I think I wanna say thirty-three.
I, I think that should be in there. Because I know there was an issue in the past with people coming in with a big contractor, 'cause it says one bag. So, you know, if you got a bag as big as your house, it's, it's one bag, so. Fifty-fives, right. Thirty-three is standard.
All right, so should we should change it to each punch is equivalent to one thirty-three gallon trash bag?
Yes, I think that would be.
And then the other thing that was changed was the transfer station hours because your ordinance before has the wrong hours compared to where it's done now. And then it said sorted recyclables, we no longer have to sort them, so I just changed it to recyclable items.
Looks good.
I'll make that change so that you guys can sign it.
Do we need a motion to approve this change though?
Well, do we wanna or do we wanna wait till she gets it all written?
Retype that section to say thirty-three gallon and then you need to approve the whole new ordinance and then do it.
When it comes back to us, we'll approve it. Transfer station fees and permit renewal date change.
So Helen and I have talked about the fact that the transfer station fees have not gone up in.
Forever.
Right. Right now, the permit fee itself is twenty dollars and that gives you a punch card and then it's twenty dollars a punch card after that. Right now Gleason Road Transfer Station, minimum it's thirty dollars for the permit itself and you don't get anything with that. Helen proposed we change it so our permit is thirty dollars, that will come with a punch card and then after that, the punch cards could be twenty-five dollars apiece instead of twenty.
How are we with, numbers wise, it sounds reasonable, I'm not saying that, but numbers wise, what we're taking in for fees versus what it's costing us to get rid of it, how far out of whack are we?
We, we're very out of whack.
Very out of whack.
Very out of whack. This is gonna start. But it's not, I mean, it's, it's gonna take a step and we're gonna have to keep doing steps. That's why I wanted to change the ordinance to say annually set rate instead of this is the rate. Because every time you do that in an ordinance, you have to change the ordinance. And then you have the cost of.
Water and sewer, they never change the rates enough and we always go further and further and further. Pretty soon you're way out of whack.
That's what's happening here, so Helen and I are asking thirty dollars for the permit will include a punch pass. Twenty-five dollars for the punch passes after that and so I think you guys need to vote on that as an okay thing. And then I can do the, the permit renewal date would be another.
We change the proposed rates of the transfer station to be thirty dollars for the first punch card and permit. And is it twenty-five dollars for each card thereafter?
So how much would that be a bag then?
Two dollars and fifty cents. And I know up north when we go to our camp, it's three to four dollars a bag, so it's still.
Second on that, Tom.
That's reasonable, it's fair.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Opposed, okay. Date change.
Date change, Helen is asking to change it from November because that's when taxes are due and everything and it gets to be a real cluster in the office trying to do all the tax payments and that. She's asking if we can change it to January, so, because there's not a ton going on in her office in January. I mean, there's stuff, but not as much, so that.
Well, it makes more sense.
And then it would be calendar year instead of this funky, everybody's gonna remember in November when it's Christmas time. Okay, don't forget your Thanksgiving turkey and your per, permit for the.
I make a motion to change the renewal date to January.
Second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Municipal roads, general permit notice of intent.
Yep, so this is something that you guys do every year. However, without a town manager, I can't sign this. You can have a principal executive officer or ranking elected official fill this out, sign it and we can submit it. We have to have this done by January twenty-sixth.
So a ranking elected official would be either one of us or Helen?
I think Helen could work. I didn't know who could or couldn't, so I just figured I'd bring it to the meeting. But this is the one that allows us to get like our Better Roads grants and our grant and aid and stuff, so it.
Principal executive.
So have Helen sign it?
Alicia's sick and probably won't be in till at least next week sometime, that way we could get it done this week and get it out, so we're not late.
That you point Helen to.
It, oh, no, it's a notice of intent. Watershed Management Division.
Yeah, there you go.
Any discussion? All in favor? Speed limit ordinance. I had something on that. I find it funny, you've got Syndicate Road at twenty-five miles an hour, yet you've got Hollister Quarry Road, which is to my remembrance even more dangerous at thirty-five. I, I personally think that should be lowered to twenty-five too. We missed that when we were going through before, 'cause that road's narrow.
I don't know all these roads, so I just went with between Chad and what.
Syndicate Road in Pittsburgh is a two-lane road. Hollister is about a lane and a half.
Okay, so we can change that. I'll have Chad do his driver belt. Testing of speed limits.
There you go.
Were there any other ones that?
That was the one that stuck out to me, it just seemed odd. All right, so you'll get that.
Sign that one next time, yep.
Okay, ATV ordinance.
So this one, I would not approve it until you approve the speed ordinance. As it stands right now, your speed ordinance stands and this is a piggybacked one-line item on your current speed ordinance and all it says is ATVs can cross the road at a ninety-degree angle. That's all your, so if you pass this before your speed ordinance, you're putting the cart before the horse.
Yep, okay.
But did you have any other changes on this so that I can make them at the same time?
No, I know a few years ago, there were people talking about opening up, you know, some of the roads to ATVs, so.
I think we need a little more discussion.
Yeah, but until that happens, I guess, I guess we leave it like this.
We can always revisit it down the road.
Whenever, right.
This kinda gets it, the speed ordinance that you have now was in the nineteen seventies, I believe, or early eighties. And it's, it's like piggybacked upon piggybacked upon piggybacked, so these two documents would relieve the piggybacks and, and get it so that if you needed to change something, you're not having to go through multiple steps and recreate a wheel.
Truck signs, train trestle height signage on Proctor-Pittsburgh line.
So both, I reached out to Michael in the town of Proctor because we had three trucks in one day all go down West Creek Road trying to get to Amia and two of them backed up on a people's lawns, one got nicely stuck on somebody's lawn. So we ended up calling chief and we ended up calling Amia, they went down to resolve the issue. And I asked the town of Proctor, I said, don't, we know they have a sign that says no tractor trailer trucks, nobody pays attention to that. And I asked if there was a way that we could get a sign, and I asked Chad to drive the roads 'cause you kinda get road blind when you drive the roads all the time, new signs don't seem to stick out. And I said, do we have anywhere between Proctor and Pittsburgh, like when you turn onto Depot Hill or you can go straight to Amia? I said, do we have any signs whatsoever that say there's a height restriction? Because if they try to turn down Depot Hill, you've got Depot Hill Bridge, which is a height restriction. And if you go straight, it's a train str, train trestle and there's a height restriction. I said, I believe we should have a sign before you get, 'cause there's no signs right now according to Chad, from Proctor at the, you know, Beaver Pond Florence Road intersection in Proctor all the way to the train trestle or all the way to Depot Hill Bridge, there is no height restriction signs. So we said, what if we put one at the corner of Depot Hill and, or somewhere in the stretch between our property line and there to say that there's height restrictions ahead.
Okay, uh, 'cause I read that in the thing, my, my issue with that is they're gonna get all the way down that road and then they got no place to turn around. So if they've gotta get it back in, in Proctor, really.
So I've talked to Michael and I've asked him and he was gonna take it to his board and I didn't hear how that turned out yet, if we could fix a sign either with his sign that says no tractor trailer trucks or right after it or right before it that says that there's a height restriction ahead. He had sent the email, which I included in your packet, that said maybe you can put it on your town line.
But that's too late. It's too late.
Then they only have Humphrey Road to even try to.
Well, they got Humphrey Road and they've got Depot, but most of those guys can barely drive forward. I've watched them for half an hour try to turn around in my driveway, which you can fairly easily back a fifty-three foot trailer in there if you know what you're doing. But they don't know how to back up. So you gotta, you gotta let them know. In, basically in Proctor by the bridge. That you gotta go on Route three, you can't go this way.
There are signs by the bridge, but some of them are now in the backroads of Proctor, coming down West Proctor Road, going around Beaver Pond.
All around that way.
Coming that way.
Okay, well, so that if you put them by that five corners.
No, they're not even going to the five corners, they're going West Proctor Road and they're following it right up and going up Beaver Pond Road.
By the pond, how do they make it around those corners?
They do it.
That's tight in the pickup.
It's tight in my beast, but they do it. So we can ha, I can call Michael again and say, can we put it right beside your sign? Worst case, I think we should put it right on the Pro, the Proctor-Pittsburgh town line and say that there's a height restriction, but I didn't know how the board felt about adding additional signs for this as a warning because there's nowhere for them to turn.
'Cause I know even West Rutland's still having a problem with them trying to go over that new bridge over there they just put in.
Well, whatever happened to the sign on Route four they were gonna put in?
Nothing, yep, and then. I've heard of no communication since. December.
Years ago before the, you know, little bridge got put in, that was, that was the only way they could go, get the Florence was through, but Beaver Pond. And then they, when they got to the train trestle, Amia had that little private.
Well, they still got that road there.
But that's really not even a town road.
No, it's not.
That's what the grain truck goes through there too.
Oh, yeah, tractors.
That was the old way of getting into Proctor with that.
Yeah, I would, I would guess, you know, get with Proctor's town manager and see where we can put.
Proctor should cooperate.
He seemed nice, yeah, I think he will.
Yeah, he's struggling with tractor trailer trucks too.
I think West Rutland is, Proctor is, we are, you know.
I mean, and almost, so if they're coming that way, almost need a sign in Center Rutland on West Proctor Road saying, no trucks, low height restriction or something. That's where it needs to be to force them to Route three. So maybe that's a phone call to make, maybe Proctor and Pittsburgh call West Rutland and say, hey, you know, if we furnish a sign, can we put it, you know, on this road, 'cause it's not doing Center Rutland or whatever it is. Was it west or center at that point, center? point? Center. It's not doing their road any good to have these tractor-trailers driving over it.
So do you want me to call Center Rutland, and we'll furnish the sign if they'll let us put it up?
I would.
Might as well ask the question.
Ask the question, yeah. Because again, you, you gotta put it at a place where they can turn around. Otherwise, you're gonna be over everybody's lawn.
Yeah.
Hayfield and.
Yeah.
Cornfield and wherever else.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, library trustee from one-year to three-year term.
So Steve Belcher came in, and Alicia happened to be here, and she says, oh, yeah, we need to talk about that at the meeting. Um, I guess the trustee has always been a one-year term. They're asking if it can be extended to a three-year term so that they don't have to have a vote on it every year, and I don't know what the process is.
How many trustees do they have?
There's only one that is voted on by, or appointed or whatever, by you. The rest are all their own.
They have four or five.
Trustees, there's four or five of them.
So the, so what they're talking about is the one that we?
The one that we, that you appoint, or however that works.
Okay, so they want that to be a three-year instead of a one-year term?
Yes.
Shouldn't be any issue with that.
Isn't that in front of the voters for that position?
Yes, library trustee is on there.
It's on the ballot, so.
So what do we have to do to, you gotta change the ballot.
You gotta change it, you can't do it.
We can't, yeah.
Not this one.
So that would have to be on the warning.
That'd be on the, the warning for town meeting.
Yep.
The voters have to decide that, not us.
Maybe next year before we can get that straightened out.
Well, they wanted to know if they had to petition, or if we could just put it on the warning. By what I've read, we can just put it on the warning, and what I've listened to with BLCT clauses.
Like what we said, they could petition.
Right.
This board can do it, yes.
Right, you, you, you as a board can put it on the warning, or you can make them petition, whichever you decide to do.
Put it on the warning.
It would have to be a, a motion on this board to put it on the warning, that's all. Am I correct? I believe I am.
Yes, someone seconded that.
Somebody gonna tell you you're wrong.
Second.
Well, you can.
Alright. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Town meeting, in-person versus hybrid.
So as it stands right now, a hybrid meeting would make it so that you can have no voting on the floor, and those that are participating via Zoom, or however you wanna do your hybrid meeting, would not be able to participate with comments or questions. So if you have it in-person only, you can do your voting on the floor, and you can have your discussions as you normally would, but if you decide to opt with Zoom, there's no on-the-floor voting, and.
No discussion.
You can't do both.
The people that are on Zoom cannot participate in the discussions. They can only watch, they won't be able to participate in any way.
But the people on the floor can?
They can't vote, but they can have discussion.
Yes.
So then everything would be on the ballot?
Everything would have to be.
Voted on, it would not be on the ballot.
Anything, if, if you do the hybrid as it stands right now, and they're, they're waiting for legislation to clear up, they're saying that they don't know if they're gonna have it in time for when we have to have the meeting warned or not, um, on if they would be able to do anything other than that. But as it stands right now, if you have strictly in-person, you can do the voting on the floor, and you can have, um, discussion and everything. If you have Zoom, the people on Zoom cannot participate in discussion, and there will be no voting on the floor.
So in other words.
If I.
If you're doing both, nobody votes except that day for voting.
On the Tuesday. It would become an informational meeting only and not a town meeting.
If my memory serves me right, in order to change it from voting these issues from the floor to the ballot that had to be done the year before.
Yeah, that's right, but this is different, Joe, because of the fact of the COVID bull crap that's been going on. This is, they enacted this amount there, what, two years ago?
Yeah.
And so that one has sunset. They're trying to get a new one for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four. It hasn't passed yet, therefore they're saying you either do it completely in, like you did pre-COVID, or you can have no voting on the floor discussion only, but those participating via Zoom can't do discussion.
To get them to switch, and they, they don't.
Right.
So.
Well, they might now, because.
They might, who knows?
There was a few.
Always been a huge.
Few hard-hearted people that were always against it. Some of them have passed on.
We got our hands slapped several times on that one in the past.
I think it should be an in-person only.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I can see people going in on Zoom, thinking they're gonna be able to talk, and they aren't, and they're not gonna be happy.
Yeah, I can see that.
I think that's a.
There's gonna be a fight on mute.
That's a train wreck.
You don't really wanna go there.
And I've talked to Alicia about it, and she's said in-person only.
I think in-person myself. I'm just one.
Absolutely.
Well, get, make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we have an in-person meeting this year.
Only.
Got a second mark? Any more discussion on it? No, I think, I just see the, the half and half as a train wreck.
No, that would be terrible.
There are two, right now, each forty-two has not passed yet.
No.
So it's very wishy-washy on what's gonna happen, what's not gonna happen. Is it gonna pass in time, is it not? And I'm looking at our deadlines and.
Yeah, no, we need to make a decision.
Most people are comfortable, they can wear masks if they want to at the meeting. I have no problem with that.
We can provide masks. We can provide COVID tests for everybody who's there, because we've got plenty of them in the office right now.
And we can spread the chairs out a little further, you know, a little further, so. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Don't breathe.
You're gonna swab mine holes if I swab yours.
Town meeting warning.
God.
Did you want me to change this to add, and I need to know if you want it on the floor vote, or as a Australian ballot from the library trustee to change from a one-year term to a three-year term?
That has to be on the warning.
It has to be on the warning, but I need to know if you want it on Monday night or Tuesday vote, Australian ballot, or on-the-floor vote.
Put it on the floor.
That's on the floor vote.
Okay.
Did you submit the copy of that or no?
It's only money issues.
Yeah, that was in there.
I must've missed it.
Any other issue can be voted on the floor. Only money issues.
You vote your budget on the.
Budgets or voted on the floor?
voted on the floor. What, what was the one that, there's only one thing you can't do it on the floor.
The only thing you can't do on the floor is to elect officers for the town.
Right.
Right.
So we have town moderator, selectmen for three years, selectmen for two years, town clerk, treasurer, trustee of public funds, and McClure library trustee.
I did not see that.
All issues are voted on the floor.
Okay, alright.
I'll have to bring you another one.
So, yep, and when do we? Okay, so we've still got time at the next meeting?
We have got to approve it the next meeting.
Well, we got, we're here tomorrow night. Can't you do it tomorrow night?
No, because you're only in executive session.
We'd have to, yeah, we'd have to.
You're only an executive, so you can't do it then.
You can't do it after that.
Okay.
But as long as you guys are okay with everything else, I'll just add that one.
Yeah, you just go, yeah, add that. Everything else is good to me.
Okay.
So add that, and yeah, and.
If you get it done, we can all stop in and sign it before the next meeting, too.
Yeah.
That's no problem.
And when you get it done, can you send it to me, because I attach it to this set of minutes that it's on the agenda?
Yep.
Hydraulic study, authorized representative and reimbursement request.
Uh, hold on a second. Let me just write a quick note.
That pertaining to.
So this was found when we were going to do all of the, um, the grants and loans and things that we have, that we can get reimbursement for, and this is for the hydraulic study happening, or water system study, depending on how you call it. Um, the opera, the only authorized representative that they have currently is John Haverstock. It never got changed. Um, so we have a change of authorized representative form, and I have filled out a reimbursement request for reimbursement, because we have accrued forty-two thousand dollars worth of expenses.
Oh.
Um, so you guys need to figure out who you want as your authorized representative. Alicia had asked me if I'd be okay with it. I said, yes, if the board approves it, I'd be fine with that. If you want her to be it, or someone else to be it, that's fine, too. Um, but in order for us to be able to submit this, we need an authorized person.
Well, that makes sense.
You're willing. You said you were willing.
I'm willing to do it. It's not a big deal to me.
I move. I still move.
Second.
Any discussion?
No, it's fine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now I have to have you guys sign this, please.
Well, jeez, you didn't tell us it was work at all.
Um, so you guys are gonna sign down here, and I'll have to have Alicia come in and sign it, so.
Okay, while we're doing that, municipal energy resilience program, this is the one I heard about last night at regional.
Yes, this is the one. So there is a grant out currently that we can apply for, that will do energy audits on our buildings, and then we can also apply for grants to fix whatever comes up in the energy audit.
That would be part of it.
That would be part of it. Installation, insulation could be part of it. So you, they said we can do municipal buildings. Uh, Alicia and I talked about it the other day when she came in, because she was like, what is that? Because she and I were looking over the agenda. She's proposing that we do the municipal offices here, the EMS building, the firehouse, the library, because we, we support them with most of their funding, or a good chunk of their funding. And then I was talking to Dave tonight, and I said, if we're doing them, why aren't we doing the historical society?
You can do that, too.
Yes.
Um, you guys would have to rank, if those are the only fives that you wanna do, we would have to rank them one, two, three, four, five.
You got anything else?
Um, I mean, we have the transfer station, we have the highway department, we have sewer, we have water buildings, but our main, questioning employees, their main concern is this building.
This building.
Is number one.
Number one. First response, I don't know how, what their building's like.
Fire department is not bad.
We've had a lot of these lots of stuff done.
Something to make improvements.
And we've had the windows put in. So I know that, some of that stuff's already been done down there.
If, if you don't think it'd be worth it, that's fine.
I would think, I just, I just would see like the historical society, and maybe the library, ones that don't have a lot of money to do that kind of stuff, to me, makes more sense.
So would you say rescue squad second?
Is this one done in the last five years? This building?
This one, I think some of the stuff, the only windows would be the.
But I mean, wasn't there an energy audit done recently?
There might have been.
Uh, Helen said it was about ten years ago, two thousand eleven, two thousand fourteen, somewhere in there.
Time flies when we're having fun.
Doesn't seem that long ago.
Seemed like it was.
I think we haven't done.
Well.
Once you propose an order, I think that sounds good, but I think you've, you've, number one is this building?
Yeah.
Number two should be library?
Library.
Well, what, what about EMS?
EMS.
I'd say EMS, I mean, that building's rough.
They just didn't do, did they do the windows all in there? We just had.
Yes, we did windows, but I don't think there was any insulation.
No, not that I know of, so.
So I would put, my, personally, I would say that one second, library third, historical fourth.
Yeah, fire department first.
How much, where's the fuel usage? Where's the, I'm sure the library uses a lot in that building.
Yeah, I'm sure they do.
And the historical society. Is that more than the EMS, do we know?
Oh, I would think.
I would think so, but, but.
Well, people are in and out of them a lot more.
EMS is.
Fully staffed.
That's why I'm.
They're not fully staffed, they stay shut up most of the time. And I know the firehouse stays at sixty, so it's not like they keep it at seventy-two.
They do the same thing at EMS?
Yeah.
There was quite a bit of money put into the upstairs of this building here, not too many years ago.
About eleven, twelve years ago, yeah.
So, alright, so if we do this building first, uh, library second, historical third, EMS four, firehouse five, and do we wanna add, uh, highway department?
Why not?
Yeah, why not?
Might as well add it to it, that'd be six. That covers everything. I mean, transfer station, all it is is that little cubicle, it's not really worth bothering with that.
Water and sewer.
Sewer, well.
So is that the sewer plant?
I have no idea.
Building.
That's one I'll bag.
What, what, what's your Sean, if we need to do it? I mean, that probably.
I have no idea. I've never been there.
Put it down as seven. I mean, you know, yes.
Well, if they start from the top, I mean, I get to holding the list anyway.
I mean, that gives us a big list.
Yes.
So.
We will get working on that.
Assistant to firefighters grant opportunity.
So there is a FEMA, I think it's a FEMA, I have it on my desk. It's an assistance to firefighters grant opportunity. I looked through it. I had Billy Hempel get me some estimates for costs on that. I just need your guys' okay to go forward with it, to put in the preliminary application to go through with the grant.
What do you have?
Well, you said that would, that would cover his ARPA request, correct?
It would pretty much cover most of his ARPA requests.
That's the stuff we need to find the grants for, so.
I think that's a great idea.
It is. PPE, correct?
Can I get a motion?
I'll make that a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Extended warranty for new truck, Chad is not here, correct?
He did not give me.
We will table that. Uh, affordablehealthinsurance.com request for Medicare info on website.
That's exactly how it sounds. They wanna be able to put the information about, um, who qualifies for Medicare, what the Medicare plans are in Vermont, how much it costs, and then resources, and it has, it has the ranks, you know, like WellCare, United Healthcare, MVP, Blue Cross, whoever offers Medicare supplemental insurance, and explains what the supplemental insurances are, the A, B, C, D types and what they are. It.
So it's a public information announcement?
Public information only. I'm not.
Who asked this?
It was, um, a woman from affordablehealthinsurance.com. Um, but they, they're a nonprofit organization that is trying to get this information out to citizens. I have thrown away a few requests from people, because I'm not, the first thing that pops up is, you know, do you wanna sue somebody, or something like that. I don't even bring those to your guys' attention.
If there's a state coming towards that one.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, if that was a state, I honestly don't think it's a good idea.
If that were such a good deal, wouldn't the league, league promote that and offer it, or?
I have no idea. I know the league right now is more worried about town meetings and ordinances and.
Why don't, alright, let me make a suggestion. Why don't we table this for now, after town meeting, when the league, we can just run it by them.
Get their opinion.
Get their opinion?
Good idea. Good idea.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay. All right, back up to old business. Uh, I'm gonna go backwards. Um, abatement of parcel sixteen twenty-nine.
So you guys had said, um, when you came out of executive session, that was the one that we had talked about that you wanted to abate it. She's deceased, her mobile home got left on
Oh, right.
Somebody else's property.
Yep.
I took it to Pat and I was told, no, only the board of abatement can abate it, so we're gonna have to
Send it to the board of abatement.
However, when I was talking to Gary, we might have a few to take because of the small dollar amounts for tax sales, so my recommendation is, can we wait, wait for that and then pool them all together, have one board of abatement meeting to just pound through everything once
That sounds logical.
Once I'm done with Gary and the tax sale list.
Very logical.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep. Okay.
And then, if you're going backwards, the tax sale
Potential purse, potentially parcel nine oh six.
So, put, uh, zero nine zero six, when we had talked about it, we had thought that it was for personal property. It's not. It's for an unlanded mobile home.
Unlanded?
So they own the mobile home, they don't own the land that's underneath it. So it's just a mobile home.
Well, so that's similar to the one, yeah.
And this one, so I told Gary, honestly, because I've talked to Gary about this one, I said, I don't even know if that mobile home is on that land because it's been, the taxes have been unpaid since 2015, 2016. Who's to say the mobile home is even still there? So.
I think somebody should go check and see if it is.
I think that's
That would be the logical thing, wouldn't it?
Well, I think that's something Jeff should go find out if it's still there.
Let's have Jeff do it.
I think Jeff should do that.
I think Jeff should.
Give it to Jeff.
Yep.
That's a job.
And then come back to us whether
Next meeting.
Well, if it's there or it's not.
And if it's not there, we're going to have to find out what to do with that. I think it's gonna end up in the board of abatement's hands.
I
Well, let's have Jeff determine whether it's there.
There or not.
He knows about this.
Yep.
Um, and I did talk to Gary quickly about unlanded mobile homes and he said they're a disaster, so.
Oh, I'm sure.
Um.
Okay, truck transfer between highway and water department.
So now that the new truck has arrived, I didn't want this to fall between the cracks because it was discussed and then it was discussed, wait until the new truck arrives before we do a transfer. The new truck is here. I don't know if you want to do the transfer now or if you want to wait a while um, between the highway and I didn't
We voted to do it, so.
You did vote to it?
We voted to transfer it.
Yep.
Okay.
We just go ahead and transfer it on paper to the, to that department.
Okay.
Those prior done.
Prior moved.
Prior, right, yep.
Yep.
Uh, act two fifty permit, state of Vermont, Route Seven Bridge and adjoining intersections.
You guys had asked for it to come back onto the agenda under old business for this meeting. So I put it back on the agenda under old business.
Do we have any more information?
Uh, we missed our date to
I believe Ricky filed.
No, Rick filed, which put it out another fifteen days, I believe.
Did he get his extent?
Well, I don't know what, I don't know, I haven't heard that.
I have not heard anything from Mr. Conway.
So we, we missed the date.
We missed the first date, at least. He had filed for an extension after the, he put his file
I thought because you guys
No, he put, he did a, what was it? It was, he did something that gave him fifteen more days to get everything together.
They only gave him like seven or so to respond after he did that first move, so he asked for an extension on that. I still think we missed our date to
It was a date on
To gain, I don't know what the word is. I gotta look it up. It's
Well, didn't it, yeah, but didn't it come out the twenty-seventh or something, December?
I thought it was the twen-
November twenty-seventh.
It came out December twenty-seventh and I thought you said you, you guys had until the twenty-sixth, that's why you wanted it on this agenda.
And then whatever he did
He had
Gave two more weeks.
Right.
So if it's twenty-seventh, so it's the ten, it should be the tenth now, if he got his, whatever it was. Because I've talked to him and, I mean, he goes, he tells all these things that I'm not as versed in as he is.
I've got, I've got the letters because they sent them to me.
So that would bring it out to the tenth of February?
It looks like. Because if it was the twenty-seventh, two weeks is the tenth.
We would still have time, right? Or did you only have
No, I think because of that, I think it gave us a, I think, I, I think, again, I, Rick, you know how he is. And it all makes sense to him and it, most of it does to me, but not all of it. And so I think it gave us that extra time. I mean, I still think somehow we need to be a party to it.
Didn't we discuss asking our attorney, Gary, about this?
Yes, and I don't know, Alicia, I don't know what she found out.
I haven't heard anything.
Yes, I think she did.
You gonna check?
Well, I think she told me, but I've had I can only remember so much. There's only so much room up here.
I know, all that hair is gone.
Yeah, exactly. Brains are coming out next. So, yeah.
Any person may appeal to the environmental division of the court within thirty days and it was issued on the twenty-seventh.
Right.
So we had until January twenty-seventh.
Yeah.
So we could have Gary
Or January twenty-sixth, because there's thirty-one days in December.
All right.
Right, so we still I think we need to find out from Alicia.
I, I think we need, can I have this, David? I think we should tomorrow, yeah, okay, well, I think we need to determine if we are going to appeal that decision of that two fifty permit for the intersection. We don't have to appeal the bridge. But I think we're gonna have to file it before then.
They didn't address some of the things that you had discussed and I discussed on the original hearing, if I remember correctly. We never discussed that.
I think, I think we should take a spot in the appeal because that intersection's a major, a major issue.
Reporting in progress.
We don't object to the bridge.
I, yeah, it's, there's no way we can do it. This wording, and they make it so hard, it's hard to figure out. So I, I do think we have to contact Gary tomorrow.
Well, I think Alicia had, I think we need to find out from Alicia what, she might have talked to him.
Yeah, I don't, I haven't heard anything back on that.
Oh, she may not. I think she's got the information to him, but she may not have heard because she's had fourteen other things that she's been dealing with too.
So, I, I guess either you or her have to file, follow up with Gary then.
Okay.
That's what I would say. I think we need to do it, uh, relatively quick. And I, I think we should honestly, uh, I'm willing to put a, um, a motion on the floor that we need to look, we need to appeal this ruling on the basis of the intersection. And then if Gary thinks we can get it in, then I think we need to do it.
If it turns out different, we can back off.
Well, at least put our notice of appeal in.
Right.
Okay, so is that a motion?
It is a motion.
I'll second it. Any more discussion? No, I think we need to, we need to at least stay, whatever we gotta do, stay involved.
And that is to appeal the intersection.
The intersection, not the bridge.
We don't object to the bridge.
No, just the intersection. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Need for phones.
You know how to use it.
Yeah.
That helps. Okay, so, uh, the dogs up on Fire Hill have not been moved.
Oh, Jesus.
Uh, they evidently are still barking. I don't know, the text I got today from Ray Forrest said he had been in contact with Rich Bowman. Uh, I'm not sure how many times he's been in contact with him or whatever.
At least three.
He has been at least three?
I think so. Rich said that he's had several people calling him about Fire Hill today when he was in and he mentioned Mr. Forrest specifically.
So, uh, at this point, we need to decide what we're gonna, or, I don't know whether we need to, again, Gary's gonna make his yearly salary off of us unfortunately. Whether we need to
Bill it back to
Con, well, contact him and have him look over our ordinance and see if we can go in there and take those dogs.
Start finding and take the dogs, whatever.
Start finding and take them. I, I hate to take them and then find out we couldn't.
No.
I mean, I think we can, but I, again, I'm not a attorney and I know both sides are talking about attorneys, so.
And I think the town needs an attorney on this one.
Well, I don't think we have much of a choice than to ask Gary the question, what do we do?
What do we do?
Because we gotta, we've gotta follow through with something.
Right, it's, you know, he's
Well, we gotta do something. This has gone on for
I mean, to be honest, we, I thought he would move the dogs, I really did in talking with him, and he hasn't.
Well, he's been given extra time since the ruling was made and
Well, I mean, he did two out of the three things we asked.
But it's not full.
No, it's not full, but he was making an effort, so from my perspective, it was like, okay, let's give him I mean, this has been going on for four years. An extra five or six weeks didn't seem unreasonable to get him to do it.
Oh, agreed, but
But now, now, you know, he's pushed us to the wall, unfortunately. And so I think we need to find out what we can do and
Proceed.
Proceed. Yes.
At the same time, it may be a good idea to talk to him about this.
Yeah. Well, in the same phone call, yeah?
Phone call, let's, let's do both at once.
Thank you.
Oh.
My recommendation is follow up, are you gonna do that then, um, with Gary?
Uh, I'll see how sick she is tomorrow.
Or do you want Ann to give him a call about it?
I don't mind calling.
You don't mind, why don't you? Because I, I'm gonna get to work, to school
It's all right.
And everything's gonna
Let's have Ann call Gary on this issue.
It's gonna be four o'clock and he's gonna be home and it's gonna be, oh crap, so.
Would you also inquire about this junk situation?
The junk situation and the dogs.
You have all the pictures in the ordinance?
I gave her the pictures.
He gave me her, his, his copy.
I shared.
And on the back is the address.
Yep, I got it.
On all the addresses in the package.
I saw in files the other packet that you had provided, so I can pull that back out for reference too.
With it.
Yep. Yep. Okay, and then we'll see what Gary says and we'll go from there. Uh, I know Mike had called around. The only place that will take the dogs is Wonderland.
And we had to call to confirm that they still have room.
Well, no, I, yeah.
When it gets to that point.
When it gets to that point, we've gotta make sure, and if that, at the time he called, it was gonna be fifty dollars a day, uh, to take them. So, you know, money's gonna mount up
Real quick.
Real quick. So, we need, and I guess the, the part about this that bothers me is if we take the dogs and they're there for a couple of weeks, we're on the hook for the money, probably.